For the city of Berkeley, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Gravlin.
Here.
Councilmember Kadekell.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
Councilmember Turbrack.
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer.
Here.
The first item of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is it a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadekell.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gravlin.
Yes.
Kadekell.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes. And I see we have Pastor Adam Grohl with us this evening. Would you please stand for the invocation?
Let's pray. God, we thank you for this beautiful summer evening that you've given us and a chance to come together as a city. And we're thankful for all that you have blessed us with in the city of Berkeley and just coming from the library and the event over there. Just it's a great city to be a part of and it's great for families and great for all people. And so, Lord, we thank you for the city you've given us. Lord, we just think of all the students coming out of school this last week. We just pray for safety this summer and wise choices for them. We thank you for all the teachers that invest so much into our students. And Lord, as this meeting takes place tonight in a very sensitive and emotional conversation, we just pray for wisdom. We pray for sensitivity and maturity and all those different things. And so, we just ask your blessing on this meeting and give wisdom to these leaders around the table in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting. And we're glad to have so many people here. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please leave your name on the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being discussed. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence. And without objection, my colleagues, I would like to read a press release that the city has just made available. And I think you will be very pleased. Berkeley City officials announced that the Planning Commission open house slated for June 21st has been canceled and the form-based proposal has been withdrawn. The form-based code was intended to establish guidelines for the city to allow a variety of housing types and ultimately attract new residents and retain long-term property owners. The initial discussion arose in response to requests from senior citizens who to consider more options regarding the housing stock that was available to them. The role of government is to respond to the will of the residents. And on this issue, the residents have made their opposition clear. And that was a quote from the chairman of the Planning Commission, Mr. David Barnett. And it goes on, "Ultimately, we have a responsibility and a great interest in attracting new families while making it possible for longtime residents to remain in our city." This is a wonderful development. And we're glad nonetheless that so many people showed up and expressed your perspective, your point of view by your presence. Presence matters. I'd like to thank the staff of the city, the Planning Commission for all they do. After all, Berkeley is, according to Money Magazine, "the 28th best place to live in America." And there is a reason for that.
Absolutely.
And it is the community we have, the people we have, coming together to make decisions that move our city forward. So, I'd like to thank therefore the Planning Commission and the residents for all coming together and making your thoughts fairly clear or very clear. In other words, we have heard, we have listened to what you had to say, and we have acted. Now, although this issue is behind us, now that you're here, you may want to take a minute or so if you want to make a point on any other issue that you have strong thoughts about. The microphone remains open. But thank you for being here on this hot evening.
Good evening to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, and to the fine residents of Berkeley. My name is Paul Schrally. I've been a Berkeley resident since April 2012 when I moved here, no, 2014, excuse me. Time flies, but not that fast. I found out about this thing, the whole zoning issue, on Saturday. I was told by my neighbor. So, we sprung into action. Obviously, we're very pleased to see the results. The few notes that I have is when reviewing the master plan, I note that, you know, there's an emphasis on revitalizing 11 Mile and the downtown area. In the two years I've lived here, I've seen very little progress in that regard. I look forward to the Planning Commission, the city council, and hopefully entrepreneurs and new businesses taking that approach and revitalizing the downtown area in 12 Mile, Coolidge, and 11 Mile. I think we have a wonderful city. I note that on the Berkeley master plan from 2007, it indicated on page 17, Table 7, that with housing unit trends, Berkeley's keeping pace with Royal Oak. I think that before any sort of substantial move is made, the appropriate studies need to be taken place. In my review of the Planning Committee's actions, I did not feel that there was enough work that had been done to demonstrate the necessity of these changes and also the impact on the city. There's another issue is that on page 18, Table 8, discusses that Berkeley is similar to Huntington Woods with respect to single-family units. I think that when we make these changes, again, they need to be congruent with not only our neighboring townships or cities, but also just the other communities. And one thing that I really wanted to press upon is that I know that last year, the Planning Commission did tender a copy of the amended long-term plan to Royal Oak and other cities. I'm not sure if any comment was received from any of the municipalities around Berkeley. I did not find anything in my search on the website. So, I think that if there was comment received, I think the citizens would are entitled to know that so that we can see what our neighborhood and communities thought as to our proposed changes. And let's see. One thing I wanted to kind of announce to everyone here that's here tonight is that after learning about the changes that were being proposed, we kind of sprung into action. We had formed a nameless coalition that was tentatively named "The Coalition Against Rezoning Efforts," which is otherwise known as CARE. Obviously, now that that has been kind of stalled now, I've circulated a sign-up sheet for anyone who's interested in joining this coalition. The coalition will not sleep and will not go silent. Instead, now we will kind of refocus our efforts now to kind of essentially monitor the progress that the city's making, not only with the Planning Commission, but also the city council and make sure that... We want to make sure that integrity is maintained throughout any future changes. We want to make sure that transparency is clear. When I moved to Berkeley, I thought I wanted to live in a place that kind of had that small-town charm, was close to local amenities. I'm from Northern Oakland County, so this is the closest to Detroit I've ever lived. And it was a calculated effort as I spanned over a few towns in Berkeley. The only house I made an offer on is the house that I live in now. It's a house that I plan on living in. It's a house that I plan on having children in. And I want to just basically preserve the integrity of not only the neighborhood, but also our elected officials and all committees that are helping with that effort. So, thank you for listening to me. Please sign up. And I look forward to working with all the community, with the entire community in the future. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Pisantini. I live on Oxford in Berkeley. I've been a resident for 20 years. I graduated from Berkeley High. My husband graduated from Berkeley High. We decided to stay here and raise a family. I want to thank the Planning Commission for coming to their senses. I am taking full accountability for my lack of involvement in what the Planning Commission has been up to. But going forward, this will change. I'm absolutely in disgust of the things that I've seen in the past Planning Commission meetings. Although I'm taking accountability for my part as a Berkeley citizen, the Planning Commission seems to have done a real nice job of being sneaky and quiet while they worked on this master plan for rezoning with no notification or input from residents. I find it troubling that Amy Vanson took, Amy Vanson and the Planning Commission notified the surrounding cities what was going on in their plans for this massive rezoning. But no effort was made to contact the residents and gather our feedback. I'm disgusted when I watch that May 24th video of the Planning Commission. Let me introduce your crazies.
Milk and cookies.
I think, I think, I think it's important to point out that the last master plan was in 2007. And that Planning Commission took the time 12 months before the master plan came out to ask for feedback from the residents. The Planning Commission did not do that. They failed. And I do blame Amy Vanson for this, as well as the rest of the Planning Commission. I certainly hope it doesn't happen again. And they also, when they did that, they also gave six weeks' notice to come to the meeting of the master plan when they were going to roll it out. Not 10 days where we scrambled, all of us. I don't have a whole lot more to say other than I am very thankful that what you guys have done. And the variances that are being given out for the violations of the code, you know, you're giving variances for these builders, it needs to stop enough.
Georgia Halloran, 3811 Kipling. I just have a quick comment on the flyer that was passed out. Where is our city logo? This B Berkeley. We voted this down last year. We should have our real city logo. All correspondence. I know it's at the top, but this is what you see down here in big, bold letters. So, I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Kempner. I live on, at 2660 Columbia. I was at the Planning Commission hearing when they were discussing the Harvard Commons. And then, I watched this one in May online. I'm horrified at the way the Planning Commission treats its residents. They were rude at the Harvard Commons meeting. They were rude, interrupted. One woman rolled her eyes. Then, I follow up and watched the May 24th one, and that was sick. It was disrespectful. If that's how the Planning Commission sees the residents, there's a big problem. They're appointed by you all. So, their actions are a reflection on you. So, if you haven't seen those, go online and watch them because they're eye-opening.
Joshua Hunter. I live on Thomas, 2240. I'm a longtime resident of Berkeley. I rented a home here and I was tired of apartments. And I finally, my wife and I purchased our first home this past December. And we were pleased and then we see this proposal, then we see this proposal from the Planning Commission. And I was horrified along with everyone else here. So, I'm very pleased to see that the issue's been, it's been withdrawn for the moment. I just want to make the point, though, that, you know, we had over 200 people organized to attend the event tomorrow. And we're going to keep a watch and we'll stay engaged because we care about the community and we want it to be a terrific place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eric Lewis, 4224 Griffith, here in Berkeley. Lived here all my life. Just want to say that when any decisions are made, this is our town. You should consult with the people. You should inform the people. And you should listen to the people, just like you've done today. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Rowe. I live on Bacon Avenue on the corner of Catalpa. I've been there for about eight years. This house I bought, I have spent thousands, tens of thousands of dollars bringing it up. Just last week, I had new siding placed. Thank you. And that's the same day I found out about the corners being rezoned for multifamily homes. I chose a corner for privacy. I chose a corner because the lots are a little bit bigger. But to have neighbors across in a three-story building is unacceptable. I have plans of lifelong Berkeley living. And I've worked in the area for many years. I've worked at one of the biggest employers of Berkeley, at Beaumont, for over 20 years. And to see the disrespect on the YouTube video was the most disheartening thing I could see from my city council and their appointees. Just remember that you're elected officials. The progressive movement is starting. We will be watching.
I'm Sharon McGinnis and I live on Robina and Morrison on the corner. I have to believe in the goodness of everybody's hearts. So, this was done thinking it was the right thing. It was not, as you can see. And there are a lot more who didn't attend tonight. You're paying somebody thousands, probably tens of thousands of dollars to help you make these kinds of decisions or directions to lead the town, the city. I would ask you to form focus groups and bring your citizens into you and listen to what we have to tell you. And you won't have to waste money on a woman who stands there and calls us crazy.
Hi, my name is Lori Robertson. I live on Dorothea. I've been a resident for 42 years. I went to elementary, middle, and high school here, as well as my husband. I have four children who also attend Berkeley schools. A couple of things. One, I understand that it's withdrawn for now. I want to make sure that it does not come back. But I do ask that in the future, you do, I want the relationship between Amy Vanson and Mark Adler looked into. I'm not a conspiracy theorist. I am not a conspiracy theorist, but I truly do believe that there's inappropriateness going on. He has a lot of lots. In the May 24th meeting, they're, Tim Murad is asking a question and she says, oh, I just want, he was asking a question about, well, they're going to have to buy multiple lots. And she says, oh, I just want to let you know that a developer has purchased lots and he's just waiting to see how this shakes out so he can get his ducks in a row. Who is that developer? Is it Mark Adler? Because if it is, that's inappropriate. So, he has all of these lots, including one on my street. So, what is he waiting for Catalpa to open up so that he can build that way too? That's exactly what's happening. And I don't know if you're the, you are the new city manager. Nice to meet you. We spoke on Facebook. I do think that, I'm sorry that you had to come into this, but I'm telling you, you're the newbie and you do need to look at this because that is a problem. Maybe not with just Mark Adler, but with all the builders. As far as the last May 24th meeting at the 1704 mark, I've watched this video multiple times and have taken minutes. This has consumed days and days and days for me now. This is ridiculous. I'm in Oakland Manor. This doesn't even affect me. It does affect me. It affects the entire city. Everybody needs to be involved, whether you're in Oakland Manor or St. John's Woods. But at the 1704 mark... I can't remember now what happened at the 1704 mark. I'm so mad. No, shoot, I'll come back. Anyway, an apology from the Planning Commission needs to be in order. A written apology needs to be published to all of us. It's not so funny now, is it, sir?
Hi, my name is Wendy Zabramski. I live on Gardner Street in Berkeley. My husband is a lifelong resident. My concern in all of this was to realize that the, of course, the two subdivisions that are excluded and that many of the Planning Commission people live in those areas. And it was very disheartening that they are making decisions for the rest of the, you know, and it's not affecting them. I find that, I really believe all of them should be dismissed and new appointees appointed.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Height. I'm at 1370 Princeton Road, which, when looking at the map, really appeared to be one of the most affected blocks in the residential rezoning due to the fact that not only were townhouses going to be allowed, but also apartment complexes from Woodward all the way to 11 Mile. I purchased my house eight years ago as a single homeowner. It was a foreclosure that needed a lot of work. That work has been accomplished. I'm now married. I now have a two-year-old son. My husband and I plan on staying here in Berkeley. We were just looking at adding an addition on. Do you think I'm going to go spend $75,000 to improve my house if you're about to build an apartment complex next door to me? Our home improvements are going to cease until we know the future of our neighborhood and the future for our family. And that's what's important here is the future of all of your Berkeley residents' families. We appreciate the withdrawal and the consideration and the time that you guys have taken today to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Monica Vasquez and I live on Catalpa. We moved from Royal Oak for many, many reasons. My boyfriend and I had no idea about Berkeley until we went to an open house on Bacon. And we were like, holy cow, what is this place of amazingness? And we were lucky enough to buy a house a year ago before the market exploded. And I am almost a lifelong renter. My mom was a single person. We always rented. We never owned a home. When you build multifamily houses like the city was planning, you are enticing people who end up getting stuck in paying rent to landlords. Some are good. My experience, most are bad. Those families never, ever get to experience owning a home of their own, to be able to paint the rooms whatever color that they want. If they want to have a border up on their room that is She-Raw or God, I'm Old, G's O P's, what's, you know, Teletubbies, I don't know, but you can do it. But when you're renting, you can't. All of these improvements are important to the city. I work for the county. When I saw that video of the Planning Commission on May 24th, I was horrified because we are under an oath, under our merit rules, to conduct ourselves in a very professional and, I mean, you don't have to be nice, but geez, you have to have respect. You work for us. They work for us. This is our community. I just, I really want to say thank you for withdrawing it, but there are people here who are very interested in to see what the outcome is. So, you know, we'll be looking. We'll be watching videos. I can get on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Patty Curtis, 2847 Kenmore. I bought my house, the Little Stone Cottage, as a single person in 1984. So, 32 years later, I'd never planned on staying Berkeley. I tell people it's the best-kept secret in the world. It's like living in a modern-day Mayberry. You might not know everybody in Berkeley, but you're only one person removed from everybody in Berkeley. When I first moved here, you used to get a notification when any kind of zoning variance was applied for, advising you that there was an application for a variance or a rezoning, and it would be the subject of a Planning Commission meeting. It's been years since I've gotten anything like that, yet we're all aware of all the variances. Anybody else get letters in the mail?
No.
Or anything? In neighboring communities such as Birmingham, when there's an application for a zoning variance, there is a sign posted on the property saying, "This property will be the subject of a Planning Commission meeting on date and time." What a novel idea, letting everybody who lives in the neighborhood know what's going on. My point is transparency and communication. Obviously, I echo everything that everybody else said here, never expecting to have still been here in 2016. The other thing, senior citizens. There's always a waiting list for Oxford Towers. And I'm very curious as to why nobody, so far that I'm aware of, has explored the possibility of building another senior high-rise with some of these attractive things like retail and pharmacy and restaurants and grocery stores on the bottom floor. You can combine a senior housing unit, and I don't, I think there are very few people in this community that would object to this. We all want comfortable, safe housing for our seniors with amenities. Thank you for withdrawing your proposal.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Edward Siznoski. I live on 3493 Thomas Avenue. I've been a resident of Berkeley for approximately five days. So... My chief interest in moving to Berkeley was that my sister's been a resident here for a little while now. She actually was married in this room last summer. It was pretty interesting, a pretty fun event. But, you know, I moved in and only days later, I heard from a friend at work who's also here somewhere that there was this controversy surrounding a rezoning issue. And I was, you know, that sort of dreadful feeling you get in your stomach when something, you just don't know how it's going to turn out and one way it goes could be absolutely dreadful? That's sort of how I felt in that before coming here, I lived in downtown Detroit for three years and midtown Detroit before that. And I loved it, but I left. And I came purposefully, very purposefully, to a small town with a lot of single-family residences, with a great deal of privacy and community, a nice little downtown area. And so, when I heard that there was a rezoning issue taking place where there could possibly be these multifamily properties and residential neighborhoods, I had buyer's remorse for a house, which is really, really scary. So, having only been here for a short deal of time, I can't speak to the nature of the communication that took place between the city council and the residents. But in terms of the rezoning issue itself, the very prospect of it, I would just like to say that the city is very attractive already. And in any efforts in redevelopment or development, I would urge that the city council consider instead placing those efforts into either existing residences and single-family homes or into business areas which we all seem to enjoy very much. Thank you.
I'm here for the meeting.
I know.
Cindy Coon. I live on Cummings. I have a business on 12 Mile. Yes. This is why I chose my business here almost 10 years ago. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Dwyer and the council. My name is Daniel Moran. I live at 2678 Buckingham. I've lived in the city for 29 years. I've been proud to say that it's a great place to live. Recently, I had a builder approach me physically and verbally. I approached Berkeley Public Safety to achieve a PPO against this builder. Public Safety talked me out of it. Since then, I've been threatened three times from this builder. And I actually have in my possession the documents that say that the builder was approved for one... my possession the documents that say that the builder was approved for one-third of the value of the construction of this structure. And I want, if this council is transparent, to go forward with an internal investigation with the whole Planning Commission. I feel it's only fair. Now, as being totally invested in the community, I'm a mentor to young men. I've been involved with the Boy Scouts for 22 years. I've attended city council meetings all over the United States on behalf of clients and communities. I have never once in my life been told that I could not speak to the mayor. When the secretary from the Building Department raced across the aisle, this lady's my witness, I was told that I could not speak to you, and I couldn't give you the documents that I have in my hand now. I was very upset. So, being calm and tactical, I waited my chance. And this is the Paul Harvey side. Now for the rest of the story. So, for the people who have colluded with one another, it's time for the truth to set them free or replace them. This collusion's gone on for way too long, and I was made aware of a term called Berkeley royalty. I've only lived here for 29 years, but I didn't know what it meant. When I found out that the builder was related to the family, I feel we need to go all the way back through 25 years as my investigation is only skimming the surface on this. I need all of your help and all of your abilities to bring this to light to everybody in this room and all the people that couldn't be here. I have photos in my possession of damage to my neighbor's property. One is 92, one is 68. The lady behind is disabled. They can't speak for themselves. Every time I spoke to the ordinance officer and was told, "I don't worry about it. It'll be okay." So I talked to Joe Gardner from the Water Resource Board, and he said, "It's a local issue." Okay, that's fine. Now I talked to the DEQ, and she said, "Why don't you get with the Planning Commission and actually come up with a plan?" Well, we know where that's going. So, here I am in front of you tonight, and I'm going to need all of your help because I believe all this has gone on without any of your knowledge. And now, because the city is being defrauded on these building permits, the one alone that's next door to me, you've been defrauded out of $2,500. And that's going to be very easy to prove, and a FOIA will unlock every single permit that this builder's been involved in, and all the others too. I work for the largest general contractor in the state of Michigan. I'm semi-retired. I saw this whole thing unfold in front of me, and I couldn't believe it. But the way that I was disregarded by this builder, does the city of Berkeley have a code of conduct for the builders to go onto somebody's property, physically and verbally threaten them, and then when you say that you've got a flooding problem, go and tear the silt guard down and aim the downspouts from the gutter right at my back door? I've got the photos right here. What do you want? What are we to do when we come to you saying that we have an issue? We need your help. Do we get your help? Do we even attempt to come back for more? I came back, and I came back again. And now, with the help of all the other people that are here, we want to know that you understand that all of us vote for you. We want you here. We need you here. But you've got to uphold where it's supposed to be. Not down here, not in the back hallway, not a little shine in somebody's pocket someplace. I'm very familiar, working for a general contractor, how business happens. I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but I believe that, transparent part, the city's been defrauded out of this money, and this city needs every penny. DPW needs it, Parks and Rec needs it. Every department in this city needs the money. So, with the degrading, the soil erosion, the degrading of our sewers, nobody can see any of this stuff, but it's happening every day. Now, the improvements that need to be made on Oxford Road, from what I was told from the county, before that condominium complex can be built is a little less than $2 million. But if it really is to be built, it's going to be over $2 million to bring that section from Kipling to Coolidge up to code so that all the other homes and businesses in that area don't overburden that system. So, from a planning standpoint, a lot of things need to be explored with engineers. We do not, our city does not have an engineer on staff. So when I asked the ordinance inspector, I was a licensed surveyor for 12 years. When I asked the ordinance inspector if he knows why that property's great, it's 15 inches higher than what the drawing says, and he looks at me and he says, "It looks fine to me." It's not how it works. The sidewalk on the property, there are two people that have already done depositions. They witnessed the contractor take a bobcat, bust the section of sidewalk off, prop it up three inches, pack sand under it, pour the sidewalk, and walk away. Now, in these documents, it shows exactly the elevation of the sidewalk before construction. Now, in my world, when you touch something, you own it. It doesn't matter how many dumpsters you parked on it, how many cement trucks you drove over it, doesn't matter. You are responsible to every citizen in this room. That's public property, and the safety has to be taken care of by the homeowner because ice buildups, the homeowner's going to be responsible for anybody that slips and falls, and the city's also responsible for this too. And we owe it to each other to do these things right. When I advised the ordinance inspector exactly what was done, I was really dismayed the next day when I saw the homeowner outside packing dirt in the crack like it never happened. Now, the two witnesses that did the depositions, we went ahead and we did that because we knew that the day was coming. I wanted to be prepared. I worked with some people who are great. They stick together. They represent everybody in the highest regard. I've worked with the Corps of Engineers, and I've worked with little podunk guys that can let me do a sketch on a cocktail napkin, and that's good. But every single thing that I brought up on this project, I was told, "Oh, don't worry about it. We'll get to it later." Well, after my property flooded a couple times, my house was oversprayed because the painter painted in the 35 mile-an-hour wind. The builder told me, "I don't worry about it. Your house is old." You know, these things just kept going and going and going. Now, when I was told, Mayor, that I couldn't talk to you, I felt betrayed. I've lived here for 29 years. I've been involved with the PTA. I've been involved with the kids on different levels. We've done the sports thing here. There's not a thing in this city that I would not support. But this right now, I think we're at impasse, and everybody that's here needs to know that all these people behind you, they all vote, and their friends vote, and the word of mouth is very, very powerful. But I really believe that all, everybody here needs to know what's going on behind your backs. And what's going on behind your backs is not representing each one of you at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Boss, and I live on Tyler. And since it's all been withdrawn, I don't have, thank you.
Thank you.
I had all kinds of stuff to say, but I'm going to keep this short. However, I do have the online petition that I want to submit as a matter of record with 1,018 electronic signatures. I don't know. Took a long time to print this and a lot of ink. I don't know if actually someone--
City clerk.
--take this.
City clerk, please.
Just let them know we have plenty more signatures.
And they were still going. They just weren't printed because, you know, it just--
Done in four days.
In four days. I do want to say thanks for not ruining what's already great. And thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much.
My name is Stephen Weathers. I live on Royal Avenue. My neighbor's Paul. And my wife and I moved to Berkeley a year ago. We lived through one of the worst economic times in one of the worst places in the country, Phoenix, Arizona, and witnessed the neighborhood fall apart around our house there and didn't want to see the same thing happen here. We were the last to leave our neighborhood in Arizona when we lost our house. And we witnessed an influx of renters and investors coming into our neighborhood. And when this came up, it reminded us of exactly why we left Arizona and why we wanted to come back to Michigan. It was a small-town feel. Unfortunately, we couldn't move to Berkeley right away. We ended up moving to Rochester, biding our time for three years after we lost our house to be able to buy a house again. And when we decided to buy, my wife, who's a schoolteacher and, who was a schoolteacher until we had our first child, we were very selective about the communities that we wanted to move to when we came to Michigan. It was Berkeley. And, you know, we appreciate the fact that you guys took this off the, out of consideration and thought about the will of the people. I've seen comments that you're trying to attract millennials to the city. By the nature of where I work, I work in marketing and advertising, and it's a young person's game. I work with a ton of millennials. I think if you're able to go back to the 2007 master plan and actually start revitalizing our downtown core, 11 Mile, Coolidge, 12 Mile, and create a walkable district that attracts young people, you're going to have thriving businesses. You will have businesses that can help increase your tax base. People who will want to move to the city, you'll see rents for those businesses increase over time as it becomes more attractive. You'll also be attracting the younger generations that you so desperately want to get because you're afraid you're losing it to Ferndale or downtown Detroit. I also like to ask the rest of the residents behind me to join Nextdoor.com, where a lot of this organization over the last couple of days took place before it spilled over into the Facebook organization that Paul started. So that's about all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I start? I'm Don Jordan. I live at 3238 Elwood. I thought it would be a good time to jump in because I'm one of those millennials that people talk about all the time. I will say that I moved here from Denver, Colorado, four years ago, and Berkeley sold itself to me. Like, I knew there was a great reputation. I worked with a great Realtor who turned out to be my next-door neighbor, and, you know, he, you know, we just, we fell in love with the city. My wife and I, like I said, have been here for four years. About a year ago, I got a job in Ann Arbor, and it's about, you know, hour, 15 drive in the traffic. We're staying here. We're staying in Berkeley. We like our neighbors. We like the schools. I like the fact that I built a raised-bed garden in my backyard with all that Berkeley dirt over in the dirt pile. We always like, we have a brand-new daughter, and we always walk her by the dirt pile. You know, it's really exciting stuff. And then lastly, I will say that in a, when I first, I just wanted to tell one really quick story. When I first got out of college, my wife and I lived in South Florida, and I worked as a newspaper reporter. I worked for three years at the Palm Beach Post in West Palm Beach, Florida, and I covered municipal government. So I sat in a lot of those meetings where no one else is sitting in the back and took notes. And I understand that working in the public and being a public servant is a difficult job, and you do deal with a lot of emotion. And, you know, I credit you all for doing that and for listening very patiently tonight. But I will say, when I was watching that YouTube video, I was really surprised. It was something that I didn't really believe when I first saw it online, and then I watched it myself, and I said, "Wow, this is true." And I just think that that level of disdain for your community is very troubling, and that's not why I moved to Berkeley. And so, you know, I just, I just want, I want Berkeley to be the place that attracted us here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll try to make this short. My name is Mark Clark. I live at 1359 West Boulevard. I have so many points, I'll try to keep it to two or three.
Thank you.
No problem. I know, we've had some excellent points tonight. I was born and raised in Chicago, Chicagoland area. I've lived in Canada. I've lived in Europe. Been here 14 years about. And this plan, the way it went about, the way it was not disclosed to the residents here, was a piece of crap. It was bad government, gentlemen and ladies. It was. There's no other way about it, no way to cut it. It's just the way it is. It does say withdraw. Thank you, all of you. But we need to put it in the trash can and burn it and never come back again. The next time this, take the 2007 plan, revise that. You need to include everybody. I did not see, I did not see one email. I did not see one public announcement through the Berkeley News from the city government that they were doing this. I caught a little piece of it about two months ago, Planning Commission, when they were talking about the new transit line that may come through here in about 30 years. And I didn't think nothing about it until this weekend, when my neighbor informed me and was quite shocked. I hope everybody stays in touch. I hope everybody stays with their eyes on the ball. I hope everybody on this council continues to do a job that they were elected to do. That means to serve us. And you're doing that. Thank you. But I want to, I know I'm rambling. I apologize. Kill this, kill this thing. Don't say withdraw. You need to change the wording. It's gone. You got to say, "It's not coming back. We're going to do it right." Thank you.
Thank you.
It's something that's built on relationships. It's the one thing that distinguishes Berkeley from many of the more upscale neighborhoods in the metropolitan Detroit area. Many of us have lived there our whole lives. Many of us, our fathers and mothers and grandparents have lived here. You know, a lot of the people, a greater percentage of the people here today know each other in each other's families than you will find in most communities in Michigan. That's the thing that makes us something special here in Berkeley. And what you have proposed would dramatically change the complexion of our neighborhood and of those relationships. That is something that should not be done without being put to a vote before the entire community. It is not something that should be done with an email or with a flyer on the door. That's something that we deserve to vote on because it fundamentally changes the quality of our lives.
Thank you.
My name is Deana. I live on Harvard. We just moved here a year ago, my husband and I. We just got married. And I think I'm just going to repeat what everyone else said. It was so cool to come to this neighborhood. I can walk to Westbourne. I can walk and work out. I can go play tennis anytime I want. I thought it was very cool. We're a physician and a nurse, and we were planning to stay here, so I hope that we have good reason to.
We'd like to have you.
I'm back.
You're back.
I think seven of, my name is Chris Germain. I'm a 25-year resident of Berkeley. Live at 1186 Harvard Road, seven houses away from the corner of Harvard and Stanford, which was one of the areas that was proposed for this multiple-dwelling thing. I'm happy to hear that this has been put aside, elated actually. But I still have a concern because I was like, "How can they do this when our road is falling apart?" Last year, I brought you the same one-gallon size of Harvard Road and gave it to Derek, and he promised me that with the new budget year, starting July 1st, that something would be done. We got cold patch. We got cold patch. Cold patch doesn't stay.
July 1st, yeah.
Spray patch stays because that's the only thing that's holding the road together directly in front of my house. I drive a fairly new car, and when I take off in the morning, it's like a jalopy. I'm understanding that things are in the works on our road to fix it. I don't know when that's coming through because we haven't been told. We went and approached the workers who've been closing off our streets one week, another week, and said, hey, what's going on? They're fixing the connections to houses. And I said, oh, boy, I hope my house, I said, oh, you should have received a letter, and if not, you're okay. I need to plan for this if I'm going to have to pay for it. I have not heard a thing, anything about my house. So I hope, I hope and pray that I'm not going to have to pay for it. But at the same time, something needs to be done with Harvard Road. I am fearing the next rainfall because it is very dry outside. And you can literally look out my front window, and you can see the roadway rise because the water's getting under it. I will make sure to drop this off at DPW tomorrow so Derek knows that I'm on this. And I would hope that instead of cold patch, which he will probably offer again, that we can get some spray patch. We're a major thoroughfare. And now that they've cut up our streets some more and fixing these, you know, connections, it's going to be worse until we finally get our original curb-and-guttering back that we had when we moved here in 1991. We get a new road, and we get a new infrastructure underneath that road.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just to tell you that that's on its way. You do need a new road at Harvard. Let me assure you.
It's right there.
It's on its way.
My name is Glenn Peery. I live on Corner Tyler in Catalpa. First of all, thank you for pulling back on that proposal. And I would also like to, you know, I had a prepared statement. It was wonderful, but out the window now. Four-year resident, wife has lived here mostly her entire life. We live in the house her parents bought in 1971. So we plan to stay a while. And this no longer being a concern, what with the triple lot in our backyard that would have been ripe for development, we appreciate it, okay? In regards to the commission meeting video, the 24th of May, a parable. I spent a long time working for other people, many of them I didn't care for. I had a lot of bosses I didn't like. And when it came to that, I said, well, it's time for me to find a boss I do like. So if there's that much disdain for the citizens of this city to make fun of us and call us names, you know, maybe it's time to look for other opportunities. That goes for anybody. I do hope an apology is forthcoming. I do think it was not befitting of the profession at all. I was insulted, and I really don't consider myself all that crazy. So, and you guys, I see some sullen faces, and I'm glad. I'm glad you're paying attention. I've lived in many places in Michigan throughout the years, many city councils over that time. I don't consider myself extremely active in politics. I only do it as a necessity. But it's reassuring and refreshing that you're all paying attention. We don't have all of our laptops open and doing the Facebook like in some other places I've lived, so I do appreciate that. Thank you all for your time. Thank you, my fellow neighbors.
Very good. So thank you all for being here on this warm evening. You know, this is democracy. Somebody wants to speak?
Yeah, are we done?
Well, we have room for more.
I tell you what, there's people.
Oh, well.
It's even hotter out there.
It's hotter out there.
Heard the word.
I'll invite them in.
Second shift.
Second shift. Okay. Okay, thank you all. Thank you.
We'll go out to the people outside. Good luck. Okay, thank you.
I'll ask.
I know it's right here.
See ya. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Morris. I live at 1714 Wiltshire Road. I've lived in Berkeley for 40 years. I'm a senior, and I live in Oakland Manor. And I want to make it clear to all of you that I am thoroughly disgusted with the proposals that have been made and how the process took place. Excuse me, I haven't planned anything to say. I don't have a prepared speech. I apologize for stumbling, but I am really upset about this. I have raised my concerns to a couple of people and planning commission, and I was dismissed. And I noticed after watching some of their meetings that other people's concerns were dismissed. That's not appropriate. That's not the way Berkeley should run. I'm sorry. It's just not. I mean, everybody needs to notice that. I know that, after serving for 16 years on the CBA, I understand. I see how things go. I mean, there gets to be a group think, and they kind of, something takes over. I under, I see that. I understand it. But it's not right. And I want you to know that the attitude expressed by our city planner is atrocious. She seems to be under the false impression that she works for developers and not for the city, the residents of the city. I know that firsthand. I'd like to see something done about that. Needs to be changed. I have a lot of questions about this. I want to know who proposed, who initiated this whole process? Why we need it? Because I don't see a rash of people running out of Berkeley, moving away. I don't see a rash of vacant houses dictating that we need this. We need it. No, I don't see that. In fact, I see that we have been receiving accolades for, I don't remember what it was, safest city, most desirable. People want to come here without worrying about what it's going to become. They like it the way it is now. There's nothing. There's nothing that needs to be fixed. There is, I want to know what perceived problem there was that required such a drastic measure to fix it. I don't see it. I want to know. The residents deserve to know. And I understand, I don't understand why so much money was put into this and so much time was put into this. And now, all of a sudden, over a year and a half later, they're going to have input from the citizens. I don't get that. That's not right. We should have been involved way back at the beginning. I'll cut my statement short. I'll stop here. You all have my phone number. If you're interested in anything I have to say, you're certainly, I want to welcome you to call me, and we can discuss it. I have a lot more opinions on the matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Kurt Height, 3525 Robina. I do, again, I want to echo the sentiment. Thank you very much for the strong statement, and hopefully that it's permanent and it's gone, and we don't have to worry about the issue. I do want to say, though, that sometimes people confuse people not wanting some kind of change like this on a drastic measure as being not want change at all. You know, there are still areas that they've even talked about during the planning commission, whether it's on 11-mile that are businesses that are no longer functioning or whether the townhome areas that they approved years ago on Greenfield. You know, maybe approach those areas and look at them in a different way to maybe rezone them. You know, we would love to see you guys continue to work on those areas and not just say, let's change everything about Berkeley, rather than refocus on those areas and make those areas better. Because those would probably be looked at as the weakest links of Berkeley. And you've also heard other, you know, suggestions like, you know, something for the, for the senior citizens where they would have shopping and banking and stuff like that in a new building. I don't think you would hear residents cry against that because that's something that would give back to the longtime residents of Berkeley that are looking to stay or maybe, but can't keep up their homes or whatever. So thank you again, and I look forward to talking to you guys in the future.
Thank you, Kurt.
Hello, Seth Jones, 3514 Robina. I just want to come up and briefly say that I think this is a growing issue as well as the increased size of all of the new houses that are going up, all the remodels, all the tear downs. This is just an inherent problem that continues to go on. I've spoken to two members of you yourselves more than once about these previous constructions and developments, and we're met with just, oh, don't worry, it's fine. And then unfortunately, found out about this through word of mouth and was very pleased to see everyone here tonight and actually very surprised. This is not my first meeting, but this is my first meeting with this kind of turnout. I think last time I was here, I was one of two people here under the age of 40 and was congratulated for attending. So needless to say, I'm pleased everyone's here but disappointed at the action and the reason we're here. And I just would like to agree with everyone so far that I've heard and just say, I don't think this is the right path. My house is directly impacted by the zoning change, and needless to say, I was angry. I have yet to get any kind of official notice. I know that's in the to-be-done or was in the to-be-done in the procedure. But at the same time, when you're proposing something that affects someone's ownership of a property directly, that person should be notified immediately. Not to mention my neighbors to say, hey, you know, this, this land may be developed in the future. What is your opinion? But needless to say, I think you guys are understanding the city's input on this now. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Seth.
Hi, everyone. I want to say thank you so much for withdrawing the proposal tonight. I actually live on Harvard, and I have been there my entire life, except for the time that I moved out of Berkeley after high school, thinking it was not the coolest place to live ever. And then once I got married, had children, all three of my kids now will be raised on Harvard in the same house that I grew up in, that my grandparents owned as well. So we are Berkeley lifers. My name is Arden, by the way. And I, I'm here strictly because I truly believe in our school district. And our children are the future. And I, I could not imagine raising my children anywhere else. We actually lived in the Birmingham School District for about three years. And when my children started, my oldest is six. She attends Rogers. She was in the preschool at, in Birmingham at West Maple. And we had our second child. And I just said to my husband, I know you grew up over here. I know you love this area, but I can promise you that you will love Berkeley way better. And I convinced him to move from a 3,000-square-foot house into my parents' bungalow, okay, that my dad sold to us. And now he is like, I wish I could come to the meeting with you. Totally not that kind of person and just loves everything that Berkeley stands for now. And to see, you know, this massive change. I mean, we were talking about actually moving. And that, to me, was, I mean, I was really emotional. We were in travesty this weekend, and I couldn't sleep on Sunday because I was on my Facebook looking at all this stuff that was happening because it was that difficult to really, you know, take in. And so I think that, I don't know how many of you guys live in Berkeley, if you raise your families in Berkeley, but as you've heard, it's the greatest place to live. And it's something that, you know, thank you. It's something that is so unique and so special. And I just think that you guys really have to understand where we're coming from. And even though I may be a little bit older than a millennial, you know, we're not far from it. And there is so many of them wanting to live in our community and just can't afford it. My brother has been looking for a house in Berkeley for over two years. He finally found the house, and guess where he found it? My neighbor across the street, who has been there for over 60 years, has, was born and raised there, raised all her children there, and they're like in their 80s, finally got into the Berkeley Tower Apartments on, you know, yeah, Knoxville. Thank you. And they finally got into there, and they were telling the neighbors that we were, you know, that they had thought about leaving, and they could not fathom selling it to anybody that they didn't know. And so my brother and my sister bought the house across the street from us and have been living there for about two weeks. And it's like the greatest thing ever. They get to see our kids, you know, grow up. And that is what Berkeley is made of, and that's what we want it to stay like. So please, please, I urge you from the bottom of my heart, okay, to not bring this back. That's it. Thank you.
My name is Guy Bennett. I'm at 2993 Kipling. And I just want to say real quick, because everybody has said everything. My wife and I chose this city in 2005 because we were bringing our kids from Ferndale to schools of choice. My younger daughter is now going to become a senior. And our family has loved living here. And when I saw what was going on, it really got me upset because this whole small-town feel like everybody's talking about is true. And for that to become destroyed with, it was just a crazy plan. And then the attitude of the people in the video just really got to me, too. So just want to echo almost everything that everybody has said here and just add my voice to the, to the mix.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Well.
All right. I always got the opportunity to talk, so I'm going to do it.
Absolutely.
The city planner is, I'm amazed that she's not here tonight. She's too afraid to be here tonight. Having said that, longtime resident, voted for most of you guys that are sitting up there. And my son just turned nine. We adopted him nine years ago. People in the city know of him. We raised $5,000 for an organization called Kids Taking Cancer because the Berkeley Community Center gave us the space to do this for free. In other cities, it's not done like that. I don't want to say how I feel about you, sir, because you don't want to know. I appreciate the fact that this is a community that I can raise my kid in and have him have a future in life. But if you're going to bring in housing that's going to, let's see. We got the smallest crime rate, one of the smallest crime rates in the Detroit metro area, don't we? Sure we do. Bring in low, low housing. Bring in low housing, the rates go up. In addition to that, education, let's try that out for a second. I'm looking at you, because I'm not looking at them, because I appreciate them. I do not appreciate you, sir. If you have apartments, and you have residents in those apartments, guess what? If they have kids, they don't have to pay taxes. Who gets the burden on that? We do. I'm still surprised she's not here tonight. I hope she gets what she's deserving, and that's a resignation tomorrow. As for you, and your entire planning crew, that doesn't plan, I won't say the word, I was close to saying it, it appalls me. The last time I was here, and I understand that I have not been to a lot of city council meetings, that was for the nativity scene. So that shows the impact of what things happen in the city that bring out the best in the residents of the city. Friday was the last day of school, and we're sitting around, having a beer, just chilling out, and all of a sudden, my neighbor, I get an invite on Facebook, and the next thing I see, another invite on Facebook. And it's only a few hundred people. Now, then it was over 800. I know how politicians work, and the importance is, because here's the thing, not less than two weeks ago, some guy went in on a rampage and killed people. I think that's more important than their stinking rezoning system that you're trying to put out there. And here's another thing, I got rid of cable about a year ago because I didn't want it. The joke of it is, I would watch the public access channel, now I can't. So all of a sudden, oh, look at this, wow, under our noses, we get everything out there. Now you guys all sitting up there, we all voted for you. We don't have to vote for you again. But make the right decision, not only to withdraw the proposal, bury it, then bring up everybody that's involved in it on charges, and have them either resign or get fired. If you make a mistake, where I work, you get in trouble. No one's gotten in trouble for this. You guys have greased a lot of palms, and I'm sure there's a lot of money that's been passed underneath the table to other builders, Adler and some others. I don't want a huge house next to mine, and the thing is, I appreciate that you're going after properties, don't go after the properties, go after vacant properties. You want your house torn down? I don't think so. And the other sad thing about it is, the city planning commission, I don't know this from, I've not studied up a lot on this, you guys can help me out with this, are they all Berkeley residents?
Yes.
Okay.
Must be a Berkeley resident to be on city council or on any commission.
I know on the city council, but I wasn't sure on the city plan.
All the commissions, yes.
All right. It just floors me, I mean, I want my kid to be happy, and I don't want somebody to come up and kidnap him. You got to go. That's all I've got to say.
Hello, my name is Daniel Reinick. I live at 3690 Gardner, on the corner of Gardner Edwards. I'm directly affected by this zoning proposal. As far as these developers, this whole proposal to us citizens of Berkeley says that it only is going to benefit the developers. Mark Elder built a giant home right across the street from me. He tore up the street, forgive me, I hate public speaking, I'm having a hard time.
You're okay, you're doing fine.
Oh, thank you. He dug up the entire street, dug up my lawn, my lawn still has no grass from two years ago, he dug up a tree that I just planted. You know, does that say, well, he tore down a tree, knocked over the power lines, we had no power for two days. I still have copper embedded in the windshield of my car from that incident. I mean, you can't tell me that he cared about me at all. And it just, you know, and one guy lives there now, one guy, and how does that, you know, it affects the community. He used to be this little old guy I'd put on garage sales, and we'd always go over and visit him, and so now there's this one quiet guy, and this giant monster upstairs laundry room, this huge house, it's got five feet of lawn on all three sides, it's ridiculous. And putting up, you know, a proposal for these giant multiplexes, it's not Berkeley. I mean, hands down, it's not Berkeley, it's not us, that's not, you know, I've got two kids at Patton Gill, one just got done with Anderson, and it's the most incredible place to like raise a child and to be part of the community, you know, there's a level beyond the kids, too, the adults, we get along, we love Berkeley. And this is, I mean, I can't stress anymore, ladies and gentlemen, this proposal is 100% not Berkeley.
I'm Eric Lewis, and I'm back. I've been sitting here listening, and a lot of my friends and neighbors are here tonight, and not everybody wants to speak, but I have some thoughts I'd like to share. Our signs say, "City of Berkeley, we care," and I think we've told you that. And I want to make a point that all the people here tonight are invested in this community. They're invested emotionally, they're invested financially, and we're all invested in the relationships that we've built, our families that have grown up here, and the future of here. If and when we put in multi-unit housing, a lot of thought and consideration should go into who's going to live there, how they're going to fit into the community, if they're going to fit into the community. You know, I think about the few multi-unit buildings that there are here, and I don't know any of the people that live in them. I know somebody that lived in one transitionally until they got into a house, and that's great. But a lot of people are just passing through. We don't need to attract those kind of residents, we need to attract people that are going to be invested in our community. And I just want to say that anybody that's here tonight, this is your town, this is our town, this is your family, and if you've got something to say, come on up and say
Hello, my name is Brendan Felensky. Please don't let the tennis shoes fool you. I'm a 34-year resident of Berkeley, born and raised, and in 2007, I had the great privilege of purchasing my own home in Berkeley. 34 years makes me just at the cutoff of the millennials that Ms. Vanson spoke of, not so highly in the Fox 2 news story. What I took away from that was a statement that millennials don't necessarily want to own a home, because they don't want to work for it. They won't want to do the hard work that it takes to maintain a home. Over the nine years that now my wife and I have been in that home, we have put thousands of dollars into it, as other homeowners have said tonight. Structural and aesthetic upgrades, and the sense of pride that I get from that home couldn't get from anything else. And I'm here to just say tonight that, to say that millennials don't want to work for it, that's a misnomer, that's not true. And I would ask that the council in the future, as the other millennial gentleman mentioned earlier, please talk to us. We'll help you attract other hard-working millennials that want to be here, and want to build the community, and want to preserve the community as it was built by our forefathers and previous generations, because we want it to exist in the fashion that it has all these years, for another 100, 200, and so on. So, thank you for your, thank you for your decision tonight. I do find it a bit unfortunate that money had to be spent for the proposals and surveys and the other work of 18 months of work that went into this, only to have it turned down, though I'm very grateful that that was the decision that occurred this evening. So, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Hi.
Hello.
Scotty Ball. Hi, my name's Catherine Morgan, and this is Connor, and I am the coach on the Berkeley Dance Club of his T-ball team. I came to Berkeley two years ago as a social worker, single mom, who bought a home on Cambridge, and it is the best opportunity I've ever had in my life. I live next door to a wonderful millennial in a two-bedroom home. I live next door on the other side to a fabulous couple who has two children in college and are working professionals. Across the street, I live with, I live across from a couple who are senior citizens. And I can tell, I'm also a professional who works in housing in southeastern Michigan. I service six counties of veterans and low-income individuals in six communities. This is a multifamily community. When you start bringing in numerous developers that are in it for the bucks, when you start offering different options, trying to cater to populations, you're losing the true value of what affordable, appropriate housing is for the Berkeley community. This community is single-family homes. It's moms who coach T-ball, it's working professionals, it's millennials. But we all are okay with cutting a lawn. We all want to help seniors across the street from us. If there was ever an opportunity to help seniors maintain in their residence, we all know a best practice, is for them to stay where they are and you build the supports around them. I would be very happy to, it's true, it's true. Not many seniors want to leave their home, and it's just what we all want. So I'd be very happy to help coordinate initiatives to work through Oakland County's Community Development Block Grant. I would be very happy to start working on endowment programs to help seniors stay in their homes, because the reason they're in Berkeley is because they want to be in Berkeley. And the reason the millennial next door to me, the working professional's next to me, and Connor and I are in Berkeley, is because we want to be there, too. So, please keep it as it is, it works, and it's a really fabulous community for everyone.
Have we exhausted, everyone? The points, however, have not been exhausted, and the stories that we all can tell of our association with this city, this community, this family. I've been in Berkeley 36 years, and that was not the plan either, like so many others. And I am so very happy and very proud of this city. And this is an example of why we're proud as a family. We come together and we talk about things that are on our mind. We come to City Hall, and who are you talking to? You're talking to your neighbors. That's who you're talking to. And so, this, to my mind, is the essence of democracy at work. This is how we decide things in America. We decide, we, the people, make the decisions. And so I'm thankful to all of you for being so patient and contributing so much, and now we have an entire agenda here to also fulfill. So if you would indulge us, we are now ready to move along. Ms. Boucher, next item, I've almost lost track, but it is the consent agenda. Would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular 36 city council meeting on Monday, June 6, 2016, and work session on Friday, June 10, 2016. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1303.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Councilmember Terbrack. Ms. Boucher, thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Grablin?
Yes.
Kadeklo?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now we come to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on the regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please move on to item number two?
Motion number M4016, matter of considering a special event permit request allowing the Second Chance Network, 28855 Van Dyke, number 213 Warren, Michigan, 48093, to hold a solicitation charity drive in the city of Berkeley on Wednesday, June 22 through Saturday, June 25, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M4016?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadeklo?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is not the first time that Second Chance Network has come to this body to ask permission to hold one of their charity drives. We are joined by Deputy Chief Crum, who is going to talk to you a little bit about the process by which they have to go through in order to receive their approvals.
Okay. Deputy Chief?
It's a hard act to follow, Mr. Mayor. And I'm not used to speaking to so many behind me. This is a semi-annual event that Second Chance comes. They have four locations in the city of Berkeley that they like to put some of their individuals out at and collect donations. The dates will be Wednesday, June 22 through Saturday, June 25. It's 12 in Coolidge, 12 in Greenfield, 11 in Coolidge, and 11 in Greenfield. Their hours of operation are 7:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and they said that's really on weather. If it's raining in the morning, they'll come in the afternoon, raining in the afternoon, they'll come in the morning. So, I'm not going to be real long-winded tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions on this item? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. In the past, we've limited them to some of these intersections because of safety reasons. Are we going to grant, are you recommending granting all four intersections this time?
I am. In fact, the first year, I think they asked for eight, seven or eight intersections, we've limited them down to four, and then only the Berkeley side of these, affects a couple of them, and we have enough, we can watch those intersections.
Okay, is there anybody from Second Chance here tonight?
If they were at 7 o'clock, I'm not sure they're still here now, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Kadeklo?
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Chief. Are they going to be wearing something to identify themselves, or?
Absolutely. They have the required reflective vests, they also have some cones they'll place out there, and they've had some more training since the last time they were out here. In fact, the term they use was extensive training, so I'm looking forward to some well-trained individuals.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M4016?
Kadeklo?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Grablin?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Motion number M4116, matter of authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Lord Act Sergeant to provide architectural design services for the City Hall renovation project for an amount not to exceed $199,250, as stipulated in its proposal. Money is to come from account number 101265818000.
Is there a motion to approve M4116?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Baker, with support by Councilmember Kadeklo. Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, actually, this comes to you through a subcommittee of Councilmember Stedman, Mayor Protem Baker, and Councilmember Kadeklo, and as well as some staff members, both Darshel Strickland-Love, as well as Amy Vanson, worked to whittle down the large number of applications we initially got in response to a plan, so I believe Mayor Protem Baker is going to speak a little bit about the process.
Your Honor, thank you, thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'll be glad to say a Mr. City Manager rather than Mad City Manager here, so thank you for being here with us. Absolutely. Yeah, we've, tonight's conversation thus far has been a lot about pride in our community and incremental investments in our properties. We've heard some very compelling stories this evening of folks that have made wise investments and decisions to either maintain or improve their properties so that it will service them and future generations to come. What this item speaks to is our property. So we've talked a lot about individual resident areas, and this one talks about our communal property, this very facility, this building. I'll just spend just a second on some of the context around this, and we can talk process, and then the proposal for going forward. And last year, we had a firm come and assess the status and condition of all of the municipal facilities, seeking to ensure that we steward the maintenance of these buildings in prudent ways. We needed to start with the facts. We needed to understand where we were in the condition of our various buildings throughout the city, with all of the pros and cons, all of the things that are reasonably solid, and all the things that are in desperate need of repair. We organize that into different categories of severity, and work through concepts and approaches on how to consider each of those. And this is one of those proposals. This very complex, the City Hall that we're sitting in this evening, those of you watching at home, you get a chance to see it on your screens, is one such building that has significant needs of repairs. Some of the better-kept portions, like this chamber... Some of the better-kept portions, like this chamber, reflect the best that we can offer, and it doesn't reflect the types of work conditions that our employees necessarily have to focus on, nor do we think that this represents the best foot forward for our community. And so, this item here before us was the result of, I'd say, about a six-month process where we did go and seize to other city halls to understand what those look like, the kinds of thought process that they went through, the ways in which they engaged with their residents, to say, if we wanted to proceed with something, how would we go about doing that? What would it look like? What kinds of services do we want to offer, or how do we want to offer those services in a way that our residents can appreciate? It puts forth a good perspective on our community. It provides a safe and comfortable environment for our employees to bring their best when they provide those services to the residents, and helped us put together a request for proposal. That request for proposal went out to various architect firms to come in and share with us their vision of how they would engage us in this conversation. Another dominant theme from earlier this evening is around the notion about a conversation, making sure that we engage right at the beginning of that journey. And that's something that we would do with this proposal, is to say from the very start, how and what ways would we engage with our employees, with those that visit the City Hall, and all that the City Hall represents, the residents of the city at large, to ensure that their voices are heard, and that we provide, again, that safe, comfortable workplace for the residents, for the employees, and also something that the residents can have a sense of pride in, knowing that, hey, that is Berkeley, that is what we have in need for our workplace and representing our community. So, this proposal here, we started with, we received 10 proposals from various firms with a very wide spectrum of costs from $160,000 to well over $600,000 for this work. So, it's quite a spectrum, it's quite a spread there. Went through a process to narrow that down, and we did interviews of the final three candidates to get their thoughts, again, somewhat about how might this City Hall look. But we really thought of those as about conceptual concepts, more so than anything that, say, this would be specifically what it would look like, and here's where the museum is, and that kind of stuff. It was really more about how and in what ways would we engage as a group in that dialogue, so that if we did choose to move forward from one phase to the next, we would do so with clarity and with broad consensus. And so, the proposal that we have tonight is one such firm, Lord X Sergeant, and I think we have some folks in the room, hi folks, here that represent that firm. It's our recommendation as the subcommittee that the broader council consider moving forward with this, to have them guide us through this collective conversation, to guide us through the strengths and the challenges with this facility, the desperate needs that we have in areas that the residents don't necessarily see on a day-to-day basis. But it's something that our employees need to work through every day they come in, and to help provide us with that safe and comfortable environment, to provide the quality services that our residents deserve. And so, I'd like to offer, if my colleagues on the subcommittee have any additional thoughts that they'd like to share before we engage the broader group in the process or the work. And again, thanks to staff and administration for all of their help in guiding us through this process, to bring something to the community so that we can discuss this together going forward. If I may, any additional comments from?
Just that I feel very comfortable with our whole process and with the firm that we are recommending tonight. So, and thank you, Darshell and Amy, for all your help with this.
I would like to clarify, this wasn't the budget. We have allocated these funds, and they do come in stages, if I'm not mistaken. So, it's, can you further explain that?
Yes, thank you again. Yes, so this is part of the budget, the approved budget process. And there are several phases to this, at which point we would have opportunities to make different types of decisions. We're also talking about a not-to-exceed, so it's nice to know that there's some degree of certainty, to say it would be no more than this. And it, again, gives us that chance to look from one phase to the next about how would we proceed if this made sense. Sir?
Very good. Councilmember Kedekel?
Thank you. I also want to echo my sentiments, my thanks and gratitude to our staff, Amy Vanson, Darshell Strickland-Love. I enjoyed working with this committee. I was really happy with the interviews we had. I think we had three very qualified people in the end. I'm very comfortable with the choice we're making, and I just want to echo one of the comments that one of the interviewees made. It's demolition by neglect, and we can't afford to neglect our buildings anymore, just like we don't want to neglect our homes. And so, I look forward to moving forward with this process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment for the residents. Most of the old-timers know that this building over here used to be a carport.
Right.
Put up walls, and the walls are coming apart. So, something has to be done because it is in really bad shape. So, it's not, it's demolition by neglect. It's got to be done before we lose that whole side of the building. Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else? Any questions? The architects are here. If you would like to come forward, we're certainly glad that you came to join us this evening. Do you have any overall comments to make?
I'm Jim Nicolow. I'm with Lord X Sergeant, principal with the firm. I've been there for 20 years now, and this is Kristen Knight, who will be your day-to-day project manager. We're super excited to get started. I think we bring up a history of adaptive reuse of historically significant buildings, of which this complex includes, and we're just super excited to work with you and the community and get started.
Very good. Well, you're welcome. Councilmember Stedman?
I just wanted to point out that this proposal is taking just this entire complex, the old City Hall and firehouse and this building, and looking at the total structure.
And I also want to point out that there is going to be a Berkeley firm involved with this project, also working with Lord X Sergeant.
Yeah, SES is the mechanical and engineering firm that's working with us on the project.
Correct.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, thank the subcommittee for, also for all the work you have put into this, the many hours of meetings and discussions and so on. And thanks to the architects for being here tonight. It shows your interest as well in receiving this award. So, if there is no additional discussion, then we are ready to take a vote. Someone in the audience wants to participate?
Do we get to?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm just wondering, for nearly $200,000, is that just for the services, or does that include capital expenditures?
That's for the, thank you, Your Honor, that's for the services to get us to the types of plans that would then involve capital expenditures. So, it's for the services.
Architect.
Architectural services throughout the process. Yep.
And then, beyond that, who do they, are they involved and responsible for seeing it go, you know, putting it into action?
If we chose to proceed, for sure, they would be involved, they would be with us along the way, us as a community, us as employees, us as interested stakeholders throughout the entire process, to ensure that the vision that this community shapes manifests itself in the actual building. So, what they wouldn't do is just draw up some papers and then disappear. They would help guide us throughout the process, helping us along each decision point. And if and when it made sense to proceed to the next, they would be there for continuity and to help us do this in an efficient and professional manner.
Do you have an idea of exactly what improvements are intended to be done, or is that something that this is supposed to discover?
Well, this will help us address, in broad strokes, this will help us address the structural and architectural issues that this building currently has. There are leaks and environmental issues. It is incredibly inefficient. We spend so much money here as a city on this building with air conditioning and heating that just disappears. So, they'll help us identify and rectify those types of issues. There's workflow problems, there's ease of access to the various departments to be able to get in and out and to conduct your business in an efficient manner. There's inefficient or unused floor space that we, as residents, are paying for that we have no access to use. As was mentioned earlier, this complex includes the old fire hall, which is behind us here on Coolidge. It's architecturally significant. It was built in 1928, and it's listed on the State Registry of Historic Buildings. And so, we're paying for that, and if we don't do things to update it or maintain it, then it will collapse, and we'll have bigger issues. So, they'll help us understand what we can do to preserve the historic legacy of that facility and make it useful for us as residents, in terms of meeting spaces and ways to conduct efficient business, while preserving that asset that's on the state registry.
Have they been able to give you an idea at this point as to what the entire cost of, I assume you're talking about improvement, not everyday maintenance, but maintaining the physicality of the buildings and structure? Have they been able to give you a projection as to what they might anticipate that the capital expenditure?
There's some initial inclinations, and we learned a lot of that, too, when we went to visit some of the other communities to see what they invested in their city halls. And a lot of that, again, is up to us to decide which path we choose to take. There's the, you know, the minimal incremental kind of, just fix a few things here and there, all the way to a broader vision for, you know, a more engaging kind of space. Each of those would have a different price tag associated with it, and then we, as residents, we, as the community, would need to decide if and when we want to, or how we want to move forward with those different options.
So, is there funding available for this already, or is this something you're going to go to the public for, like another millage, you know, bond proposal?
Sure. So, there's funding for this item here before us, and we do, the city has a building fund that's been set aside for such an occasion. And then, again, based on the nature of whatever option we decide to go forward with as a community, then we would see what kind of funding options are available between grants because of the historic nature of the fire hall and those types of things, for funding and revenue to fund the project.
Do you anticipate going for a bond?
We certainly couldn't rule it out, depending on what choice we made. Now, that, again, would be a very thoughtful conversation with the community, would require a vote and all that kind of stuff, if we chose to do that path. Again, that's just one of many potentials that we could choose, and we would certainly not go there alone. We would go there with consultation of this community, because this is our home, and so we'd want to do so very thoughtfully.
I think people are going to hold you to it.
That's why we're here.
And I hope that you don't think, just because there's no audience here on a normal basis, that people don't care.
Thank you for those comments.
I think tonight is proof that we do care.
And I'm glad that we continue to live up to our city's motto, I think, and I absolutely believe and am very happy that, although I do love seeing more folks here with us tonight, it continues to really bring me sincere happiness when I'm riding my bike, or I'm in the store on 12 Mile or something, and someone will come up to me and say, hey, I saw you on TV, or I saw you on YouTube, and I had a comment about this, or a question about that. That affirms your assertion that folks, not only do they care, but they continue to pay attention, and that's the way it should be. I'm really happy about that. And so, you can look forward to seeing this conversation, along with all of our other initiatives, move forward in ways that we're all involved with checkpoints along the way to make sure that we do what we need to do as a community.
One final question. Have they given you any projection as to how long this entire process will take?
Yeah, this could, so it's a phased conversation that could take us, you know, through this year for sure, in terms of the conversation. What we don't want to do is rush anything. And so, to say, you know, from one phase to the next, from the employee's perspective, from the companies that come in to do business, right? If I'm of a firm that comes in and needs to fill some paperwork out, what do they want out of the community? What do we, as residents, want to see when we come in to fill out a form, or to renew our dog licenses, or things like that, to get a permit for something? How and what ways would we want to engage in that? So, that's all part of the process as well.
It sounds like it's a multi-year task.
There won't be any new construction here anytime soon.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your questions. Your Honor?
Yes.
Oh, I was just going to reiterate that this firm will be engaging the residents, the employees, and so on, in interacting with them in terms of what the needs of this community are.
Very good. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to go through the phases of this, that may clarify this a little bit. Phase one is information gathering, where they'll get the ideas from the people that work here, and from the residents and stuff. Phase two is space planning. They figure out what we got to have, and what we've got, what changes we need to make. Phase three is conceptual schematic drawings. Phase four, if we're going into construction, they will initiate the construction documents, which we'll go to bid with. In phase five, they will, construction including project management. So, this company is going to take us from now till we get it done, and I think that speaks volumes more because they know how to do this, they know how to use this historic fire hall, and they'll take us right through the whole process, and hopefully we'll be in good shape, so.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else wants to weigh in on this?
I just want to reiterate, these are funds we have already established for this purpose, and in true transparency, we can't present to the people what we want, we can't show you what we're talking about. And we've done our due diligence, and you see the myriad of bids that we received. This was in the lower end of that, and this appears to be what the market prices are for this going rate, and we will phase it out. If at any point we're unhappy, then we will change course, but we've done our due diligence to make sure this is the best. And coming new to the table here, I'd only come through the main hallway to have my services that I needed as a citizen, and when I was appointed to this position and got the tour of the rest of the building, it is a circuitous maze back there, things have just been patched together over time. So, this is a need that's facing Berkeley, but it will also be the people's decision when we get to that point of the process.
Very good. Then, Ms. Boucher, we are ready to call the roll on M-4116.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Ravlin?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M-4216, matter of authorizing the purchase of official Dream Cruise merchandise at wholesale for a cost not to exceed $32,000 and sell it at full retail. Funds for the expenditure will come from account 614915818000.
Is there a motion to approve M-4216?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kedekel?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the weather's warm, the days are long, it's time for one of our favorite times of the year. Cruze Fest is quickly approaching, and in order to make sure that we are prepared to have all the different Cruze Fest merchandise available for you, you have members of the subcommittee here in order to request monies to purchase that merchandise to be sold for the event itself. So, I believe our committee chair is here, as well as one of our staff liaisons.
You are here.
And so, I will turn over to them to explain the process that they went through to come here today.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Mr. Baumgarten, one quick, so everyone is clear. This is official Dream Cruise merchandise. There's, the Dream Cruise, we're part of the Dream Cruise board. There's one purchaser that we go through. This is something that comes before you every year. We purchase it at a wholesale price, and then we sell it at full retail. So, we do make, and end up making money on this. And then, also, as you're familiar with, community groups work at the different booths that will be on Woodward, and then also 12 Mile on Friday night. They do sell, based on the hours they work, then there is a breakdown, and they use this as a fundraising effort. I'm going to let Mark Kuhn, our chair of our Cruze Fest committee, take it from there, and any questions, we can both answer.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have to add is, it wasn't included in your packet because it seems to be redundant, but I did do the break-even analysis again this year, and it's virtually, it's a little bit better than last year. So, what it boils down to is this. We have to sell about 34% of the merchandise to break even. After that, it's all profit. And as you know, in the last several years, we've sold all of it. So, we fully expect that that's going to be, because we're going to do it exactly the same way that we've done, is that we start selling merchandise a week before the event, leading up to it, and then we sell it through the event. That ensures that we sell all the merchandise. That's really the biggest thing. If you have any other questions?
Well, in view of some of the questions earlier on, where does the money go?
That's a very good question. What happens with the money is, the profits for the merchandise itself is split up, split up between the city and between the organizations that use, that's their fundraiser. What is done with that is that it's paid, it is used, because we know that this event is expensive. It costs, I don't know how much, $100,000 a year, and that fundraising effort helps pay for that, as well as other donations from sponsors and things like that. So that's what it goes to offset, because our goal always is, is to break even or do better. And we've been very successful at that, so that it isn't taxing the taxpayers to put this on.
Right.
And if I can add, at any point, if anyone, at the end of Dream Cruise, Cruise Fest, there is a complete financial breakdown of every single cost, every single vendor, what the cost of the merchandise is, what the cost that each community group got, and if anybody ever was interested in seeing that, we can go through that. It's a spreadsheet, it's very clear, and it breaks it down to the sun, so.
I know it exists. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kedekel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Ms. McCarleton, as our staff, Mr. Kuhn as eternal chairperson for this committee. I know we're talking about merchandise, can you briefly tell the people if they want to get in the parade, or get a parking spot, how they can do that, please?
Yeah, so if you want a parking spot, or to be in the parade, you can come to Parks and Recreation, you can call Parks and Recreation. Parking spots will open up in about a week to people who have not had them previously. They're $100 a spot, and parade registration is $10. All your car has to be as 1979 or older, and we'll ask you to, your make and model, and give you your registration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
Good.
We're ready to move on and vote on this, then. Please call the roll on M. 4216.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And thank you, Mark, and Cindy, for all you do for this Cruise Fest, and for our Director of Parks and Rec as well. Ms. Voucher, would you please call the roll on number five? Not call the roll, but I mean, read number five. Been a long night already. Read number five.
Resolution Number R. 2816, Madam authorizing the West Nile virus expense reimbursement request.
Is it a motion to approve, R. 2816?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Councilman Stedman. Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have in front of you some information. It's one of the main things that we're asking to approve, is a resolution to allow Mr. Derek Schuler, our DPW Director, who's with us tonight, to make a request for reimbursement for the items, like Larvicide is the biggest one, that have been purchased so far. In Derek's memo that's included here, he gives you a 10-year funding program, so you'll see actually the amount of money that we've invested to keep the mosquito bites at a minimum, because it is a public health concern, especially with West Nile, and then some of the other more unsavory diseases that have been in the news lately. So Mr. Schuler can give you some additional information on that.
Thank you, and good evening. This is our annual request for reimbursement from Oakland County. Just to quickly summarize, each spring and summer, we, DPW, place Larvicide briquettes in approximately 1,500 catch basins throughout the city to limit the breeding that could take place in those catch basins. It's a special mosquito, it's a unique mosquito that spreads West Nile, the Culex mosquito. So they like catch basins very well, and so this Larvicide, which happens to be an all-natural product, basically prevents them from reaching that next state. It's a Larvicide that basically prevents them from becoming adults. So we place that in each of the 1,500 catch basins, and thankfully, the county reimburses us a partial, this is a partial reimbursement. I believe we spend $4,500 to $5,000 on Larvicide, but I am pleased to report, in 2016, we're receiving an increase from the previous year. This year, we're right around $3,100. 2015, we're about $1,900. So we're getting closer to covering our material costs for that work. So I'm happy to answer any questions on this issue.
Any questions for Councilmember Kedekel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Schuler. Over the years, have they kept track if they're getting more response from this, or less response?
It's very difficult to gauge, because it's very weather-dependent. West Nile cases, West Nile deaths are very much indicative of the weather. So we never really know, but this gives us some sense of protection, at least locally. Obviously, our other neighboring communities, hopefully, are doing the same thing. That will make us even better off. But it goes up and down, councilmen, really based more on the weather conditions than anything else. So this gives us an extended protection period, 180 days, something of that nature, so we are able to protect ourselves through the entire summer months.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else on this item? Very important item. Ms. Voucher, would you please call the roll on R. 2816?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Thank you. Yes.
Now, we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting, and before we begin that, without objection, I'd like to recognize Mayor Jerry Dorst, who has joined us. Jerry, if you would like to say a word to the community?
Well, I came up here tonight to see what was going on with these condos. So all I can say is, this is a wonderful city. Leave it the way it is.
Thank you, Jerry. And now, first up is Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have much tonight, I just would like to thank all the people that came, and express their desires for how good the city is, and to keep it that way. And we thank them, and they come every week, or every time we have a meeting, you know, it'll be a lot more interesting around here.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for coming. That's all I've got.
Councilman Stedman?
I would like to just let everybody know what the new library hours are going to be. Beginning Thursday, July 7th, Monday through Thursday, the hours will be 10:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Friday, it will be 10:00 until 6:00. And Saturday, they will be open, starting that week, from 10:00 until 3:00. And I think everybody is very excited to have the library open a few more hours. And I'd also like to thank everybody to come and show their support for the city, and let everyone know, really, how they feel about various things. Sometimes it's hard to know when we don't see anybody. We do know you watch us, but we don't know, we don't see people here very often, so it was kind of exciting to see a crowd. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick thoughts as well. First, congratulations to the chamber, and to our local businesses, and to our Public Safety Department for a toasty, as in warm, and very successful Art Bash and Lids for Kids this past Saturday. Folks were safe, and in the shade, and hydrated, as best as I could tell, and a lot of tremendous creativity, and variations on different types of art along 12 Mile. Great events and activities for the kids at, for the Lids for Kids event, where the helmets are given away, so kids can stay safe out there. I think that's awesome. So again, congrats to the city, to the volunteers, and to all involved with those two signature events. That's awesome. Across the country, looking ahead to next month just a little bit, next month is National Sarcoma Awareness Month, and it's an opportunity to learn about rare forms of cancer that are less well-known and are very difficult to treat. At our next council meeting, because of the holiday, we won't meet in two Mondays, but after that, on the 18th, we'll recognize one of those forms in particular, called Lio Myo Sarcoma, and it'll be recognized throughout the State House and State Senate as well, with proclamations or resolutions recognizing awareness for that. I mention it now, and for those of you here, or as they say, those of you watching at home, you know, if you know anybody that has a rare sarcoma, or Lio Myo in particular, we'd welcome you to join us at our session here on the 18th. We're actually going to be reaching out to folks from around the state to come help, be a part of this, and raise awareness about this particular disease. And finally, to end on a different kind of note here, Jeff Cooper once said, "Safety is something that happens between your ears, not something you hold in your hands." Again, that's, "Safety is something that happens between your ears, not something you hold in your hands." And I offer that up, because between now and when we get together again, there's this little holiday called the Fourth of July, that'll be coming up here. And I'd like to, you know, as we, as a nation, and as a community, celebrate so many great things about our country, I'd like you to consider being very safe about that. Did you know that sparklers burn at a temperature of over 2,000 degrees? 2,000 degrees, in a little thing you can get in a big box. So watch out for those. It's hot enough to melt metals. There are an average of 19,700 fires associated with fireworks each year. An average of five people are killed directly because of fireworks. And they also scare pets. Those of you that have dogs or cats can really set them off. If you happen to have such a loving little critter, just try to find a comfortable place for it, maybe turn on the TV, or the radio, something to kind of give it something calming, so that it can try to make it through that night. And of course, be aware of our city ordinances, so that if you do choose to participate in that form of celebration, that you do so both safely and in accordance with the norms that your friends and neighbors around you are hoping for as part of our city structure. So be safe, enjoy, and look forward to seeing you again soon. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some updates from the Parks and Rec Department. Summer camp officially began today, and this week, we're averaging 155 kids a day, which is a huge number, and they're doing a fantastic job. Specialty summer camps are still enrolling, so check out the Parks and Recreation office or website for more information on these camps. Additionally, Summer Fest is finally here. I guess tomorrow it's officially here, right? But in terms of the weather and everything else, and the Summer Fest events have already kicked off. Todd Lot Night is on Wednesday, is this Wednesday, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Community Garage Sale this weekend, June 24th and 25th. The last day to register for that is tomorrow. The Senior Soiree is on July 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., because we won't have a chance to meet before then. Hawaiian Luau Family Dance is Thursday, July 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Center. For information on any and all of those events, please call the Parks and Recreation. I'm going to make some comments on what happened tonight. I was very quiet, listening, very appreciative of the passion in the room, and the passion from our residents over the past week. I generally don't get up here and talk about myself, because nobody really cares, but in terms of, in terms of caring about Berkeley, every single one of us that's up here, that's in this room, that's watching this, that serves on any board, commission, works for the city, I firmly believe cares for the city and has the city's best interests in mind. I've lived here for 36 years. For those of you keeping track, that's all of my years. I happen to now live directly across from my parents, in the house that I grew up in, where they still live, with my sister and my brother. Now, I have three children of my own, that I'm raising in this city. Yes, we chose Berkeley because we love it, because it's the perfect place for us, and it's a great place for our kids. My wife happens to work in the school district as well, my kids attend the school district. And I want everybody to know that nobody up here, I should not speak for anybody else, I am not perfect. I don't know that anybody in this room, or anybody that's watching, anybody that serves on our boards and commissions, we're not perfect. We make mistakes. It is okay to disagree. That's what this country is based on. That's, we're a democracy. It's okay to passionately disagree. It's okay for people to make mistakes. And it's okay to have great discussions with our community when something happens that maybe people, as we found out, aren't too crazy about, and that's fine. That's our role. But in my opinion, it's not okay to impugn somebody's character, or integrity, or modes, or anything else that we may not entirely know about. And again, I'm not saying that we don't make mistakes, I'm not saying that maybe people have not made mistakes, but I don't think that anybody intentionally made any choices to say, you know, how can I get some people here? Or I just, at least that's not how I view it, and maybe I'm overly optimistic, but I really don't think that's the case. So I'm very proud of the way that things happened, in terms of the residents being passionate, being involved, and realizing that, you know what, I don't think this is the best thing for my city, and having a discussion with other folks, and ultimately bringing that discussion to us. Because as one of my colleagues mentioned, you know, a lot of our meetings don't have a lot of folks, and we don't hear a lot, and we do hear things, like this situation, that obviously means a lot to us. That's our role. We were elected to represent the residents. We're not elected to achieve any personal agenda that we may or may not have. So when something like this happens, and the residents get excited and passionate, and feel like they need to speak up, that's great. That's what we want. It doesn't necessarily happen enough, and I hope that part of that is because things in Berkeley are actually pretty good. Financially, we're in pretty good shape. We have great people that work here, we have great volunteers in this city, we have great residents, and we've got a halfway decent elected board up here, that I think, you know, tries our best. So, again, thank you. Please disagree whenever you feel it's necessary, but let's do it in a way that is respectful of everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's a tough act to follow.
Councilor Gravlin?
I concur completely with everything Mr. Turbrack said. And in that sense, the Art Bash and the Lids for Kid Day, that was an outstanding event. Simple. Kids are out here getting bike helmets, everyone's joyful. I was standing in that grassy patch, across the parking lot, fire truck there, spraying water out, kids running through, parents delighted. I overhear a man in front of me say to the woman next to him, "This is so reminiscent of days gone by, where you see kids playing around a fire hydrant." And I think that sums up the passion and love we have for Berkeley. So simple, and everyone was joyful and happy over just such a simple, not, I know it's a lot of work to put together, and I don't minimize that at all, but I thank you for putting the effort and the work, everyone involved in that, because it was a great day that brought us together, and that's exactly why we're all passionate. And as Mr. Turbrack said, we are all passionate. Our intentions are good. There was nothing malicious about how this came about. Most people are doing this voluntarily. So again, I echo everything he said, and please keep that in mind, and thank you all for being here. It does make a huge difference.
Thank you. Councilmember Kedekel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Turbrack couldn't have said it better. I, too, echo your sentiments. I do want to thank the residents that not only attended today, that texted me today, and now through the weekend, and called me. I want to hear from you. I want, and the emails, I want to hear. I invite you guys to come to the council meetings, come to the Planning Commission meetings, look on the website. You will be informed. We do inform the people of what's happening, and I want to thank everyone that, I mean, that just came out and spoke tonight, and I'm glad there's going to be continued interest in the city, not just for this one item. And I welcome it. I truly welcome it. As far as Art Bash and Lids for Kids, I want to congratulate everyone involved. And when you take a new position, people say you've really got your feet wet. Well, I want to thank our city manager, because he somehow got coerced into going into the dunk tank. And so, just a couple weeks here, thank you, Mr. Baumgarten, for volunteering that. Barb Morse, I want to thank you for your 16 years of service to the city on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Appreciate your work. I got a call from a resident last week, and he wanted to applaud the Public Safety Department and the DPW. He said that a tree fell in front of his house, and within minutes, the public safety officers had it blocked off, the DPW was there cleaning it up, and he really wanted to show his gratitude, and he asked me to mention it tonight. And I hope everyone has a happy and a safe Fourth of July weekend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank the Public Service Department as well, for the invite to go into the dunk tank. We didn't quite have a line like we had last night, but we had a lot of little kids with some great arms, who sent me in the water on several occasions. That's just one of the great departments that we have here. You know, I get the pleasure of being the new person here, so, of course, the last couple of weeks, I've been meeting with my department heads, and I would like to echo Councilman Turbrack's statements. These are dedicated individuals who do love the service that they provide for this city, and they stand ready at any point for the council and for the residents. If you hear something, or something's going on that you want more questions about, reach want more questions about, reach out to our department heads, reach out to my office, just like you've reached out to your council members to try to get more information. I made an effort to try to communicate on social media. I thought it was productive. But certainly, we stand ready to serve you, the people. And anytime that we can provide you some information, we, we are, we serve you and we are happy to do so. And we'll do it with a smile on our face, I promise you. So that's the only thing I would like to add to the conversation, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Otterney?
Mayor, I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. I would like to echo the comments of Councilmember Turbrack. I've been on the council, between mayor and council now for 11 years. And I have seen passionate people on every side of every issue imaginable. And I have seen people making good decisions and ones that didn't turn out to be quite so good. But it was all done with care for the city. And so it pains me to hear innuendo that impunes the character of good people. We need to be careful about making statements that may not be accurate. But passion causes us to say things. We just have to listen to the presidential election. And you know how many things are said that, in the heat of the moment, that turn out not to be exactly the case. But nonetheless, it is our process. This is what the Fourth of July is about, the freedom to come to the microphone and say your piece to your city council. That's what we celebrate. And I wish you great celebration on the Fourth of July. And, and I will tell you that I will celebrate the Fourth of July at the United States Embassy in Dublin. I have been invited to the embassy for the, for the hot dogs and whatever else they are going to provide us. But I will be in Ireland at the time and, and took that opportunity. Now, Angel School had a wonderful event last week. They are putting in a time capsule and invited the mayor to come and contribute something. All the children had written their wishes and their hopes for the future. And these will be apparently opened in 50 years. I will be sure that they will be opened on the right day in 50 years, for sure. But in any case, my contribution to their time capsule was your book, The History of Berkeley, written by Mayor Protam Baker, Jeff Thong, and Sue Richardson. And I know many of you are very familiar with that book. That's what I put in. So in 50 years' time, when somebody opens that, they will be able to look back a long ways to the history of this wonderful city. On that thought, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadakel?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.